Thank you. Amen.
Councilmember Hodge will lead us in the pledge.
Please join me in the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Ms. Keeling, would you please call the roll?
Kerry Hodge, Ward 1.
Here.
Jay Stepp, Ward 2.
Here.
Louis Tonspire, Ward 3. Lindsey McDaniel, Ward 4.
Here.
Diane Tate, Ward 5.
Here.
Lori Crute, Ward 6.
Thank you. You all had the minutes ahead of the meeting tonight, and I hope someone's had a chance to look over them, and would like to make a motion.
Make a motion to approve.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Tonight, it will take all four people voting in the affirmative to pass something since that's we do not have the ability to break a tie. Thank you. Yes, sir. Amendment to ordinances, utility ordinances regarding water and sewer rates. Mr. Reinhardt.
Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, the Water and Sewer Department, within the 2013 budget, has proposed three increases. The first increase of these is a 5% increase in the water and sewer rate. This has been ongoing for the last four or five years. It's needed to help offset the cost of the maintenance of the existing lines. The second, I'm sorry, by the way, this will add about $1.40 per month to the residential customer who consumes 2,500 gallons of water. The second increase is a 15% increase in the monthly residential base water rate. The current base water rate is $6. It's been that way for many, many years. The new increase will take it to $6.90, which is a 90 cents per month increase. And the third increase is on the commercial side. Proposed increase in the fire service rates. The existing rates have not been touched in many years also, and they're needed, these increases are needed to help offset the maintenance of cost of the water lines and meters. With these changes, especially to the residential side, we will, the city of Carterville will remain one of the lowest residential water rates in the surrounding counties.
Thank you, Tom. Counsel, any questions of Mr. Reinhardt? This is a second reading, and so do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Tom.
And those will go into effect July the 1st.
July the 1st.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Sorry, I didn't get it.
I think you have the next one, don't you?
Yes, ma'am. Honorable Mayor, Pro Tem and Council, the next item is for deposit ordinance revision. The PSC has mandated that the city issue new deposit requirements for the residential gas customers. These that are affected are, by the PSC standards, are in Floyd County. Staff looked at the ordinance changes and what the PSC wanted, and felt like that the city of Cartersville and also Bartow County's residents also needed to benefit from this change. So we've gone in and looked at that. Along with that, we decided also to make the gas, not only the gas, but also water and electric customers throughout the city of Cartersville and Bartow County pertain to this too. And with that, essentially what it does is, it states that the, someone coming in, looking at the, well, I think it applies also to existing customers, but it basically will allow them for a 24-month payment history, and after 24 months, we will go, basically go in and refund the deposit to them, either by mailing them a check or applying it to their existing balance.
So, Tom, this is mandated by the PSC.
Yes, ma'am.
And for Floyd County, but then we're making it also to benefit the citizens of Cartersville.
And Bartow County, yes.
Is that right? In Bartow County.
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions of Mr. Reinhardt? Any motions?
Motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up tonight is appeal of Historic Preservation Commission case for 601 West Avenue. Mr. Manino.
Thank you, Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. As you noted, this is an appeal to an HPC case. This particular request was for a fence that was installed perpendicular to Fight Street. This particular application had to go to the Historic Preservation Commission based on the fact that it also did not meet the zoning ordinance standards, and the applicant was going to have to get a variance for it. That is the trigger that requires them to also go to the Historic Preservation Commission. With that, the applicant requested that the fence that he had installed, which was a screening section eight feet high, from about six to nine feet off the road back to a storage building, remain in place. Historic Preservation Commission recommended that it be allowed to stay, but it wanted him to reduce it to six feet. The case then went to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Board of Zoning Appeals listened to some of the justification provided by the applicant, and they didn't have a concern at leaving it eight feet. And with the discrepancy between the Board of Zoning Appeals and the Historic Preservation Commission, the applicant chose to appeal the Historic Preservation Commission's decision to request him to reduce the fence height from eight feet to six feet. With that, the applicant should be here, and the applicant is here for this request. Yet I covered a little bit more information in the work session, so if there's any additional information you'd like from me, you know, just ask, and again, the applicant is here to present his case to you.
Any questions of Mr. Manino or Mr. Turner? Is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
Any questions of either?
I have one from the city attorney. How does the HPC have trumping power, so to speak, over Board of Zoning Appeals?
It doesn't really have trumping powers. It just takes the approval of both.
Of both. Okay.
It is a new structure that's installed in the historic district, and again, didn't meet the zoning ordinance requirements either. That's, and again, that was the trigger.
There are two different issues before the two different boards.
Correct.
In order to, for him to have the fence remain as it is in place at eight feet, he would need the approval of both, of both committees.
Randy, on the other side, part of that fence, on the other side of the street, excuse me, and that's one thing that makes this confusing, is that there was two cases going on at one time. Is that correct?
That is correct. Directly across Fight Street, there's an existing grandfathered six-foot section of fence that runs directly along the roadway, and there was a case, the property owner there installed an eight-foot section attached to that, running it perpendicular back and closing in his backyard. And at the same time, Historic Preservation Commission recommended that that eight-foot section he put on that be reduced to six feet, 20 feet, going 20 feet back off the roadway. And with that, that would be the reason, I would think, they were trying to maintain consistency when they heard that this case that was directly across the street, they did the same thing, recommended he reduce it back to six feet.
And there's obviously a difference if you are in a historic district and on a corner lot. And, Mr. Turner, that was something I didn't know. I also am in a corner lot.
Yeah, a corner lot, whether it's in a historic district or not, in the, by the zoning ordinance, corner lot actually has two road frontages, as opposed to a single road frontage.
Any other?
Or two front setbacks, as opposed to one front setback.
Question. That answers my question. I fixed the answer. It's gotta be at an intersection for these big eight-foot fence, so to speak? It can't be within the middle of the street, not the middle of the street, but you got 15 houses on XYZ Street, and in the middle down there, you got a 10 to 12-foot fence. There's no, no problem with that?
Yeah, it's not allowed for ordinance, and that's why the applicant had to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals, which in turn required him to go before the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'm still confused, because I've seen these things over the city in Carterville, so that might have been overlooked, and nobody's complaining, but I've seen some eight footers.
Yeah, there are. Again, the particular, this particular case was the fence, you know, anything over four feet in the front yard, and that is current ordinance, yes. That is what necessitated the request before the Board of Zoning Appeals and the HPC.
Randy, usually when an appeal comes to us, it is for a hardship case, i.e., we discussed a roofing on a home. This is only our third appeal with HPC.
Yeah, this is only a third, the third appeal we've had to a historic preservation case. That is correct.
And?
Doesn't necessarily have to be a hardship.
It does not have to be a hardship.
It does not.
Do I have any other questions of Mr. Manino or Mr. Turner, who is here tonight? Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to approve. Second.
All in favor?
What are we approving? For the fence to stay as is?
We are approving Mr. Turner's appeal to keep the fence at eight feet, as I understand it. Is that right?
Yes.
The motion is to approve the appeal.
Agreed.
All in favor?
Aye.
Approved? Opposed? Excuse me. Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Manino. Special use application by John Payton for property at 624 North Tennessee.
Thank you again, Mayor, Pro Tem and Council. First, we need to hear the proposed text amendment that corresponds with this particular case, which is case number T-13-03.
Okay, thank you.
These two cases are related, and I know I gave a brief history in the meeting, and I'll give a quick, brief history right now. The applicant for the next case at 624 North Tennessee Street was looking to locate and rezone, locate the existing pawn shop that's located, I believe near the Kia dealership on Tennessee Street, to a different location along Tennessee Street. And to do that, was going to require a rezoning from MU to GC where he was looking to relocate to. There was no existing GC zoning along the majority section on Tennessee Street. Planning Commission wasn't real agreeable to rezone the property to GC, but felt the use could fit in with the neighborhood, but the GC zoning would more or less maybe create a spot zoning type situation. So to try to combat that situation, they recommended that staff propose, write a proposed text amendment to allow the pawn shops in the MU zoning district with a special use. And with that, staff did a quick text amendment, allowing that particular land use of, of the pawn shop with it being allowed in the MU if they come through the special use process, which gives, you know, additional time to look at it, where it's not just allowed by right. We did that. The applicant subsequently withdrew his request to rezone the property to general commercial. Again, that's the next case we'll be hearing. And with that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of the amendment to the zoning ordinance placing the proposed use in the MU zoning district with a special use. Again, this is a first reading.
Any questions of Mr. Manino before we open it up to a public hearing? Thank you. I now open up a public hearing. Is there anyone who would like to come forward to speak for or against this text amendment? You're welcome to. If you don't mind, identify yourself and your address, please, for Ms. Keeling.
My name is John Payton. I work with the Great American Pawn and Title here in Carterville. We've been in business since the 90s. Opened up right down here in the square, and moved to where we are today in the middle, maybe 2004, 2005. We are looking to move to that location. It's a nice freestanding building, big monument sign out front. We've been in business for, like I said, quite some time, and service a lot of the folks here in Carterville with our product. We will not be, if approved, will not be storing any vehicles at that location. We have our own private lot. We take the vehicles to in case we have, you know, someone drops them off or not. But we would like to pursue that and see if we could make this happen, you know, before Paul gets here.
Thank you. Any questions? Now, did you hear this is the first reading tonight?
Yes, ma'am.
And so in two weeks.
We have the 1st of July, right?
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. If there's no one else, I'll close the public hearing. This is the first reading, and in two weeks from now, we will take up this matter again. Going with this is a public hearing for also 624 North Tennessee Street.
Thank you again, Mayor, Pro Tem, Council. Again, this is the related special use request. If council chooses to amend the text, this case would follow. If council chooses not to amend the text, this case would go away because that use would not even, would not be allowed. So with that, as I previously said, they were looking to rezone the property to GC. Planning Commission didn't feel that was a good idea. This seemed to be an alternative that worked for everybody. The applicant did apply for the special use with the thought that if the ordinance does get changed, he would like to locate at 624 North Tennessee Street. It's a previous location of the Slocum Dental Office at the corner, corner there with Porter, existing office building currently unoccupied. With that, Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application subject to there being no outside storage associated with this business, and the applicant did agree to that recommendation.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Manino? Thank you, Randy. I will now open the floor for anyone to make a comment for or against. Special use application by John Payton for 624 North Tennessee Street. Seeing no one come forward, I will close the public hearing, and again, in two weeks, we will take up both of these items. Thank you for coming. Next up tonight is, let me get my place here. Randy again. Thank you, Randy. It is first reading, zoning for Andy Postel, 801 West Avenue, Building 100.
Thank you again. This is a special use request for a religious institution, a church, to be located at 801 West Avenue. It's a three-building commercial development. All the buildings are currently vacant. Well, two of the buildings are currently vacant. This is the Arnold Tillman Commercial Development back there behind Waffle House that was constructed around the 2006 timeframe. With that, the current applicant, Mr. Postel, is a pastor of the church at the well, and they're currently meeting Excel Christian Academy. They're looking to lease another location. So with that, our ordinance does allow for this use in this particular commercial zoning district with a use permit. And with that, the city departments did review the application. There didn't appear to be any concerns. The applicant's even met with the fire department and the building official. And as I noted in the previous, in the work session with y'all, there could be a future issue for one of the buildings. There is a distance requirement for the serving of alcohol in restaurants. There is one of the buildings that potentially would not meet the distance requirement if the church is located here. However, again, the church is going in now. I don't know the church will be there five years from now. They may move to another location, a larger location, or something of that nature. But it, we just thought compelled to tell y'all that there is an effect from a distance requirement for that particular alcohol ordinance requirement. With that, though, the Planning Commission did recommend approval of this application.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Manino? Richard, will you point out again the building and the building that would be affected by an alcohol potential permit?
Yes, ma'am. The building question here would be occupied by the church. The building currently occupied by TC Yogurt Subway would not be affected by the distance requirement there, 300 feet plus, which allows them, all tenant spaces for, to have alcohol. The farthest away vacant building is over 300 feet. The middle building, all tenant spaces are less than 300 feet from the proposed church space, and would not be allowed to serve alcohol.
Thank you. I wanted that explanation before we open it up for a public hearing. And I now do open up the floor for a public hearing. If there's anyone who would like to speak for or against this first reading of 801 West Avenue, Building 100. Seeing no one come forward, we will close this public hearing, and again, we will hear this in two weeks for a vote. Thank you. Next up, a rezoning application by the Johnsons. Jeff Watkins representing the Old Christmas Tree Farm. I think it's what we got.
Yes, thank you again. This is located along the south side of Mission Road. Excuse me. It's previously zoned RSL Residential Senior Living for the development. Actually, it was zoned Conservation Subdivision prior to that. There's residential design on it. There was engineering done, and construction started before the actual development went defunct on this particular piece of property. The applicant is looking to rezone the property from its current RSL zoning district back to agricultural. With that, it was reviewed by the departments. There was several discussions regarding actual drainage situations on this particular piece of property. As you're aware, there's always been floodplain on this property. There's always been flooding issues, and with the construction stopped dead in the middle of the process, there may have been some corrections as part of the construction starting, but nothing was ever finished. So again, until a few things are stabilized, they'll, they won't, the city wouldn't be able to oversee or correct the situation that is out there. And basically, I mean, the ditches that are out there are not in easement. If there was ever a final plot recorded as part of the residential development that was occurring, those easements would have been recorded. The city would have had access and able, ability to get in there and clean those ditches and make sure the drainage system was working properly. The Planning Commission did recommend approval of this rezoning to RSL, from RSL to the agricultural zoning district. However, they didn't include any conditions based on the development process. They felt that any hold of future building permits could occur prior to easements being recorded to access those easements. The applicant said they are more than, fully agreeable to providing those easements to make sure the city has access to maintain the drainage and the drainage structures that have already been put in place in there. And again, that is something that we could take a look at between now and the second reading of this application. Again, in the written comments from the departments, there was also a comment from the gas department about one of the gas lines that it has been installed in there, and they were concerned about the amount of dirt or cover that is on that particular gas line that, I guess, occurred during the development process with the previous developer. The applicant had no desire to go in there and dig or uncover that particular gas line, but that still could be an issue with the gas department. But with that, Planning Commission did hear this request. They did recommend approval of the rezoning of this property from the RSL zoning district to the agricultural zoning district.
Randy, in the original, in the original zoning recommendations, there was, the easement was closed after Granger Road. Did you say that there had been discussion about that?
There had been no discussion in the zoning meeting about that. Mr. Sanders did mention the applicant did want to keep the frontage they had on Granger Drive for access to the property or to a future home in there.
Any questions of Mr. Manino? Thank you. I'll now open this up for a public hearing, and again, this is for Mission Road in Pettit Creek. Mr. Watkins, would you like to speak?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Councilmember Jeff Watkins here on behalf of the applicant. The applicant are Jacob and Lauren Johnson. They're with me tonight. They'll be happy to answer any questions you may have, or if you prefer to ask them instead of me, I'm sure they will be happy to talk. They have put their life savings in buying this property. They have a dream of having a horse farm, and that's what they hopefully can do with the council's blessings with approval of the zoning, mainly to live on the property, board horses for folks that don't have the facilities, as well as giving lessons. They're both horse people. I don't know why, but they are. They love horses. In regard to Mr. Manino's, I guess, comments regarding some of the public works, statements in the zoning analysis, and also the gas department, we met, myself, Carl Lujans, with Southland Engineering, as well as the Johnsons. Met with Mr. Sanders. Had a very long meeting, went over all the concerns that he had, because I really felt like it was essential that we did that, given the history of this property, which you guys are aware of, and I am too. The things that were left undone, the things that can be addressed by the Johnsons economically as well as legally, and the things that they are aware of about the property that still want to go forward and do this horse farm. One of which was the Granger Drive folks. I think they made concerted effort to go home to Granger Drive, talk to as many neighbors as they can, and I think all of them too, as a whole, are very excited about this as opposed to the senior living facility. And they are, while maybe they are not here to express some approval, I think it's safe to say that they are okay with this rezoning. We also discussed the facilities, the drainage facilities that need to be completed, manhole covers that need to be replaced, inserted, installed, as well as the head wall that needs to be constructed. And last but not least, the easements that need to be signed by the applicant. They are aware of those. They're fine with those. They are agreeable to do all of that, whether it be a condition or not, they plan to do that. I made, engaged Southland Engineering due to survey, I believe, as well as talked to Mr. Lujans about what needs to be done in regards to that, and they plan on doing it. The third issue was the EPD. Mr. Lujans already contacted a local office and determined what needs to be done to get the notice of termination, and he is in the process of doing that. He's been engaged by the Johnsons to do that. Theme is a little trick here. Obviously, there's no way that the Johnsons could afford to spend the kind of money it's going to take to complete what the prior owner started to do regarding that. However, I would argue that it's not necessary, because they're not going to do a development here. They're just going to have one house. They're going to have a barn. They're going to have a variety of facilities. They understand the issue with that out there being maybe above or below the flood zone, and the issues that could arise from Pettit Creek, and in spite of that, they want to go forward with it. I told them, it was voiced at our meeting with Mr. Sanders, as well as what was explained to them by Mr. Lujans, who was doing the engineering on this site beforehand, and they are comfortable going forward with that. Last was the issue with the gas line. What the Johnsons would like to do is they would like to leave the dirt, the dirt there. It was placed there. It looks nice now. They are concerned that it will be unsightly if they remove it and just leave the dirt from that pipe. They understand the issue with it being a lot there. The gas department can't use their current equipment to get to that pipe. So what they are willing to do is if the time comes when the gas department needs to get to that pipe, they'll be happy to remove it. They just don't want to do it beforehand. The topo's nice. It's flat. But obviously, that rests with you and the gas department. But that's, that's what they are asking in regards to what the council do, if they're going to talk about doing some kind of conditions regarding that issue. With that, we have to answer any questions you may have. Reserve any time. to answer any questions you may have. Reserve any time for going with your own.
Any questions, counsel? And Mr. Watkins? Jeff, I guess that's our main concern, is making sure that Mr. Sanders and Mr. Manino are in the loop, looking out for all the departments, because an access is one of them. And of course, that's my ward. And I'm concerned about the flooding issues that we've had on Granger Road. And this sounds like a real good chance for those to be helped. Any other questions? Or Mr. Watkins? Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to come forward and speak for or against this project on Mission Road? If not, I'll close the public hearing. And in two weeks, the council will take a vote on this. Appreciate you coming. Next up tonight is grant application except the Police Department. Chief Kaufman.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, Councilmember. In March of this year, you authorized us to apply for a Edward Byrne Grant for $9,000 to replace the Antoximner, which we are being mandated to replace. We have been approved for this grant. It has been awarded as of June the first. I need your authorization for the mayor to sign to receive those funds and to execute this application. This will help us in an otherwise tight budget situation. It will save $9,000 that we will have to spend one way or the other.
Any questions of the chief? Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Chief, are you up next?
We're asking that you authorize us to declare a 2005 Harley Davidson Road King motorcycle as surplus and to sell on govdeals.com, as we no longer need this vehicle. And we can return some money back to our bank account, basically, and use that towards a utility vehicle as we move forward. This vehicle is no longer useful to us because of its limited use life. And it's very expensive to maintain and to outfit people on it. So we would like to sell that and move on past that.
Any questions of the chief?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chief. Also, software support agreement. And this is also from the Police Department.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. We have used USA Software as our records management system for around 20 years. This is a system that actually crime mapping pulls its data from our daily reports. And these are, they also provide service. Our service contract is an annual contract that we've been paying. Currently, it stands at $28,876.30. This is a budget item. E-Verify saved documents are filed in current. And we would ask that you approve that.
Any questions of the chief?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, chief. Mr. Porter.
Yes, Madam Mayor, Pro Tem. Tonight, I would bring for you the renewal for our property in casual insurance. Currently, we were insured with Travelers Insurance and had been since 2007. They have come in with a 20% rate increase initially. And after negotiating with them and looking at the proposals, the best company we have out there for us to cover all our utilities with the $5 million blanket coverage, as well as the regular coverages, is One Beacon Insurance at an annual cost of $400,495. And I recommend approval of this.
Any questions, Mr. Porter?
Are they matching benefits pretty much?
Yes. They actually do have some additional coverage. Like if we get in a lawsuit, typically Travelers is part of the deductible, the lawyer's fees. These are out, excluded of lawyer's fees. So the overall claim costs are excluded from the expense that attorney's fees are. There's a couple of other things that we've not, fortunately, haven't had any issues, but sewer backups. Travelers has only been covered up to $500,000. This has a blank for a million dollar policy. There's a couple of other benefits that One Beacon has over above Travelers. But everything else, deductibles are all the same and everything.
Gas be covered under excess liability? Where would that be?
They're, they're going to be under the general initially, but they have, we have a blanket umbrella policy to get us the $4 million blanket to get us the $5 million total.
Dan, in talking with your colleagues from other cities, is a 16% increase about typical for a coverage, a blanket coverage?
Well, that was the Travelers final number, 16%.
That's just about four.
Really, ours, if you actually factored in, I showed in the memo to the council information what we actually paid premium wise. But since we had the firefighters and did, I actually included the new public safety building. But when you actually compare with an increase in firefighters we had last year, the start of this year, our premium actually is only going up less than 1% over last year's numbers with, because you got to ensure all the other facets as well.
Thank you, Dan. Thank you, Sam. I misspoke. That was, that was another.
No, it's okay.
Absolutely. Any other questions, Mr. Porter?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you, Dan. Fox Environmental Agreement.
Madam Mayor, Pro Tem, counsel, thank you.
Mr. Sanders?
This is a task order based on a general services agreement that we made with Fox Environmental last fall. What they are doing is filling in gaps, data gaps in our GIS, the storm sewer system on our GIS. And this agreement is for $34,500. There's three phases in the agreement. Right now, I just plan on giving them a notice to proceed on Phase One, which is $12,500. And we're going to see how that goes. And then if that goes well, and the budget's still looking good, then we'll proceed to the Phase Two and Phase Three. But I would like to go ahead and get approved for the total agreement of 34.5. And it is a budgeted item.
So this is up too, and you might not use it all?
Might not use it all. Might just use that first phase and reevaluate.
Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Sanders?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much. This next item is, we need to purchase a couple of mowers and a trailer for our grounds division that works out of the cemetery. We put out for bid these items, and Taylor Farm Supply was the low bid on all three. We want to purchase a 60-inch rear discharge mower for $9,484.16, a 48-inch walk behind mower for $3,097.77, and a 16-foot landscape trailer for $2,300. And that's a total of $15,761.93. We're funding this. We underran on our cemetery mowing contract. We didn't have to mow near, near the amount of times we anticipated. And so we're going to fund this with a budget transfer from that line item to the machinery line item.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Tommy.
Thank you.
Mr. Jones, are you up next? Replacement of sewer inspection crawler camera. Bob Jones.
Good evening, everyone. We have up for your consideration a replacement of our sewer crawler camera. This piece of equipment is used to diagnose our larger diameter sewers, allows us to pinpoint repairs, know a little bit more about what we're going to get into before we dig the road up. This camera, current camera's been in use since 99. It has reached a point in its lifetime where we spend more time making it work than we do using it. And we, for that reason, have come here to seek your approval in replacing it. We took a bid from Q's, who is the original provider of the equipment. They provided us with a price of $51,213 to do actually a retrofit rather than a complete replacement. And this bid represents a savings of approximately $30,000 over a full replacement for that camera.
Bob, are there any problems with retrofitting? I mean, is that a real good option for this?
We think so. The, the equipment that we're actually able to reuse is, it's a low-wear item, essentially. It, it just sits there. And it's solid state equipment that is just as good today as it was when it was put in, provided it functions correctly. They did test that in part of, part of their evaluation as to whether or not a retrofit would be a good idea, and came to the conclusion that it would be perfectly fine to do so.
Any questions of Mr. Jones?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Bob, you just go ahead and do the next?
You want me to just roll through?
Yes, sir. I certainly want you just to roll on through.
Next up would be our UV 254 monitor. This is a piece of equipment to be used at the water treatment plant. As we discussed earlier in the work session, it is basically a modernization of the measurement technique we use to add or to calculate a dosage of treatment chemicals at the plant. It will allow us to make faster dosage changes and more accurate dosages. All of that to say that the net result will be, we should see a savings in both coagulant and chemical usage, which at the low bid price of $7,909, we should recover that money very quickly by installing this piece of equipment.
Any questions of Mr. Jones?
Make a motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Next, Bob, please.
Next up, we have got some resetter repair clamp restock. These are standard parts that we use for maintaining the water system. These are being purchased in advance of the January 1st, 14 deadline that puts a moratorium on no lead brass or on leaded brass. This will allow us to complete our acquisition of compliant brass materials so that we will be ready to go when that deadline hits. The low bidder was Kendall Municipal at $10,736, and we would recommend your approval of that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Continue, please.
Moving on. At the water treatment plant, we currently have our Number 10 basin that is out of service due to some inoperable valves on that piece of equipment. These valves are a bit unique in that they are situated in somewhere around 18 to 20 feet of cover. It's a very deep basin. The valves are currently not working, and we expect that that will be a continuing maintenance concern. It's just the nature of the beast with these types of valves. To that end, we would like to put these valves in a vault so that it would allow us access to them in the future, should we need to get to them. And as we discussed earlier, part of the justification for this work is the expense of digging in this area. As you'll see in our next item, it's almost an $80,000 hole that we have to dig in the ground just to get to them. And in, by installing these vaults, we will eliminate the need to incur that cost in the future, should we have a similar failure. The vaults were designed and bid by Bartow Precast. They came in at a price of $44,255, and we would recommend the purchase of these items for installation at the water treatment plant.
Thank you, Bob. Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. If you don't mind continuing.
I will do so. Next, we have a bid for labor and equipment to install the vault that we previously discussed. Essentially, this is a contract to place the vaults at the plant and to refill the hole in such a way that will allow future access. Low bid was from C&amp;L Contractors. They came in at a price of $76,067.50. We would recommend the approval of that contract so that we can get this equipment in and hopefully never incur this cost again.
Any questions?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. One more.
One more. Last up, sanitary sewer manhole installation. We have about 12 locations throughout the system where manholes have either reached a state of disrepair, where it's not feasible to repair them in place. They need to be, be replaced. We also have several locations from years past, due to cost savings and other reasons, lines were installed without a manhole, which prevents us access to those lines, meaning we cannot maintain them. These manholes definitely need to be installed. We have gotten away with not having them there for, for a long time and have been lucky to do so. We have a bid from Hill City Utilities to provide labor and equipment to install these manholes. Their bid is at $28,600. We are also asking as that you approve a not to exceed number of $24,000. The city will be providing the material for this job. And we feel that that number will allow us to get this done in a future day.
As we talked about in the work session, Bob, the, the numbers are really 24 to 88. We're either getting a real good deal or there was a misunderstanding. But you're assured that there was not a misunderstanding on this.
Yes, ma'am. Each of these contractors were actually taken to the sites and shown where they're going to be doing the work. And as we discussed earlier, too, we have a pass with Hill City that has been positive. They've done good work for us in the past. And at this point, I have no reason to believe that they would not be able to perform the contract for the stated.
So we are voting on the low bid of 28.6 and the material not to exceed 24.
Yes, ma'am.
Is counsel okay with that?
Mm-hmm.
Any questions of Mr. Jones? Any motions?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Bob. Nice job on five or six. Before we go on to the monthly statement, we have had a request to add on a quick claim. Mr. Osburn brought this to us. Do I have a motion to add this to the agenda?
Should I move?
On the second? All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you for allowing the added item for the pending sale of a house in the Hamilton Township subdivision off Center Road, property located at 20 Ann Circle. In 2005, the homeowner obtained the $10,000 first-time homebuyer forgivable loan that the city offers through the Federal Community Home Improvement Program. And since she started in 2005, in 2010, she would have been eligible to apply to the city council to forgive the lien or forgive the loan through a subordination agreement, approve the quick claim deed. And that was just never done. And she did not realize that there was not an automatic trigger. And now that there's a pending sale, the property owner has requested that this item be added and approved. The quick claim deed has been drafted by the city attorney's office. And city attorney, the assistant city attorney, Keith Lovell, has stated there's, there's no legal restraints that would prevent counsel from approving it at this time. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you. Any questions of Mr. Osburn?
Motion to approve.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, Richard. Mr. Reinhardt?
General Mayor, Pro Tem, and counsel, tonight we'll be reviewing the financial report for April 2013 and comparing it to April 2012. In the general fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $1.2 million. This is a combination of a couple of things. First of all, the school bond paid off last year in 2012, and we also have decrease in lost revenues. Expenses have decreased by $622,000. This is due to decreased, to the decreased school bond expense coupled with increases in personnel expenses and increased operating expenses. Three years of revenue we're looking at on a monthly basis are the lost local option shell tax. We have a decrease in that of $459,000. Police fines and forfeiture we have an increase of $134,000. And billing permits and inspection fees, we have a decrease of roughly $3,400. The water and sewer fund, revenues have increased over last year by $268,000. Expenses have increased by $1.2 million. This is due mainly to increased personnel, increased debt, and increased capital expenses. The gas fund, revenues have increased over last year by $626,000. Expenses have decreased by $522,000. This is due mainly to decreased cost of purchased gas. In the electric fund, revenues have decreased from last year In the electric fund, revenues have decreased from last year by $94,000. Expenses have increased by $2 million. This is an increase due to person, increased personnel expenses, operating expenses, cost of purchase of electricity, and capital expenses. In the stormwater fund, revenues increased over last year by $187,000, due mainly to the reimbursement from the pre-disaster mitigation grant. Expenses have also increased by $320,000, $312,000, again, due to the pre-disaster mitigation grant, along with increased capital expenses. And in the solid waste fund, revenues decreased over last year by $45,000. Expenses increased by $134,000. This increase is due to increased personnel, operating expenses, and capital expenses. You remember, we did buy two, we have purchased two vehicles in that fund. We have gotten reimbursement from GMA Lease Pool for one, and hopefully, we will be getting that in for the second in the next month or so. And finally, the fiber optics fund, revenues have decreased over last year by $12,000. Expenses have increased by $182,000. This is due to increased personnel, operating, and capital expenses. And that is my report for this month.
Thank you, Mr. Reinhardt. Any questions?
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Is there anything else to come before council tonight? I have one item. Sometimes when we have someone who retires or leaves the city, they're not necessarily in the room on their last night, but we do have Tom Quist with us here tonight, and, and Tom, thank you so much. We wish you all the best in Athens. I think you have some, would you like to come up and say, he wants to wave. I think you have some real fans with our First Citizens Academy. I saw some of those folks coming by tonight to speak to you, but I hope this has been a real good experience for you, and we have certainly enjoyed having you.
Thank you very much. Wasn't expecting this, but I'm honored that you'd ask me to come up here, and I definitely would be remiss to not take the opportunity to just thank everybody here. The council's been wonderful to work for. Sam has been an excellent boss and mentor and friend of mine, and I look forward to maintaining the relationships that I've built here over the past five years, along with the staff back here. It's been a, it's been a great, great time for me, and I've learned a lot, and I appreciate it, and thank you for giving me the opportunity to say thank you.
Best to you.
Thank you.
Best to you. If there's nothing else to have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
So moved. Thank you.